There you are.
Got us? All right, we got...
Dennis, you good?
We're with Travis.
Oh, sorry, Dennis, your turn.
Be fessing them up.
Hey, Whit.
Hey, how are we all?
Can everyone hear us okay?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah. Can y'all hear me okay?
Can. Travis, can you hear us okay? Janet, can you hear us?
I can.
Wonderful.
Travis here.
Perfect.
All right, are you, let's see. You knew Renee wasn't able to, so who you miss at? Richard. Juan Howard.
They want to be on there.
Yes, Juan said he's on there.
All right, it's 7:30, but I'm gonna give it just a couple of minutes with the weather. And know when we expect to, at least two more confirmed. Okay, for sure.
Yep.
Are you already streaming though, or?
Yeah, I have a standard, but I can mute us if you want.
No, that's fine, I just... Yeah, well, can we talk? So maybe we just go ahead and, somebody else joins, it's fine too. All right, we will go ahead and get started with tonight's joint, uh, meeting of the Board Supervisors and the Planning Commission. We, uh, will declare, we do have a commit, a quorum for the Board Supervisors.
We have a quorum.
And a quorum for Planning Commission, thank you. So then open the meeting up then, and, uh, we have one item tonight on the agenda for ordinance amendment. And Miss, well, one item for two different, yeah, two different cha, two different changes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Steele, if you wanna walk us through those, and then we'll have a public hearing portion as well.
Perfect. So, we have two text amendments up for discussion tonight, one in the zoning ordinance and one in the subdivision ordinance. The first is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow abattoirs, which are slaughterhouses, as a use by special exception permit in A5 agriculture and RP5 rural preservation. Can everyone on the WebEx hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Great. These are currently only permitted by special exception permit in M2, which is our heavy industrial. The county has received significant interest lately from residents, um, wanting to bring slaughterhouses to the county, but with such limited M2 properties available, it's made it tricky to find suitable locations for these potential businesses. It's been discussed that slaughterhouses wouldn't be an incompatible facility in agricultural areas, especially because the slaughterhouses will have holding pens and legumes, et cetera. Uh, and this would be a special exception permit, so if you all didn't feel that a certain abattoir was suitable for a location, you could still deny it, so you'd still have some control over where they would go. So that's what I have for you all on that one, did you wanna discuss this first, or did you want me to present the second one? I guess.
Yeah, that's fine, I think, I think one at times works.
What else, Janet, any questions?
I might have a question, I just think you do have a good point in the write-up here, that their comprehensive plan to serve promote existing farming, agriculture, industry, and companion uses, and this certainly fits that criteria. Any discussion from either board?
What you brought out?
Mm-hmm.
I have had some requests asking about this.
Yep.
And that's only, that you have. Got a lot of work. So you don't need to put it in an industrial park.
We've got quite a few inquiries about it. Um, and a big issue was, there was some confusion on our end, if they needed to be on public water and sewer. But apparently that is not the ca, it's not required that they're on public, so that would open up agricultural areas that obviously aren't on public water and sewer, so.
It'd take a lot of water and a lot of...
Lots of water, yes.
A lot of sewer.
Lots of water.
All right, do you wanna do it into public hearing, you wanna do a hearing on both at the same time, there's...
Probably.
That's fine.
Have any speakers on?
Sorry.
We haven't got any calls from anyone, so we're not expecting anyone, um, but it is open if people wanna call in, so.
All right, well, we'll just go ahead and officially open the floor for public, for public comments on the first amendment. And just to confirm, you said no calls in advance, you received no emails either, Tarien?
Yep.
All right, and looking at the WebEx, we have no one else, um, one other than members. We'll just pause for a minute here, see if anyone else is trying to get in, and then we'll close the comment period.
State regulations, Esco?
Oh, yes, yes.
Does it have to be a, I mean, as the facility itself size and...
I think it's pretty heavily state regulated.
Very heavily.
We've met with some different, uh, groups, oh, there's one, um, interested in it, and yes, on their end, there's quite a few groups they have to jump through.
Okay.
Especially environmental.
Mr. Whittington, can you hear us?
Yes, uh, as long as I'm not muted.
No, we can hear you, we can hear you, great, thank you. We're just in the, we're just open the, we have the floor open for public comments on the abaters.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, looks like we have no, uh, comments, so go ahead and close, close the public comment section for that one. And Ms. Steele, if you wanna move to the second item.
The second amendment for discussion is an amendment to the subdivision ordinance to allow for subdivisions in business and industrial zones. This would allow us to maximize our existing business and industrial properties, especially within the industrial park. From a planning standpoint, in a rural county, it is a best practice to make sure your developed areas are dense as possible to prevent from sprawling out to other areas of the county. If we allow our existing business and industrial properties to be subdivided, we can concentrate development into these areas that are already zoned for this, uh, and create new lots instead of re-zoning residential or ag properties to create new lots. So we, this would allow us to maximize what we already have. And I think there was some confusion, um, over it being subdividing, this wouldn't be putting subdivisions, like a residential subdivision, in a business or industrial area. It would just allow us to subdivide the existing business and industrial lots.
Who owns lots in the industrial park? County owns them?
The county currently owns them, yes, most of them.
Well, the empty ones, or some of them.
Some of the, yeah, there is a mix though.
There is, yeah, one, or a couple, three or four are owned outside, and then it's...
I was just wondering, did they have asked who they may sell it to, or split it up to? Who has the control of that, that's what I was kinda wondering.
If the county's already sold the land, with, I don't know if any, we've put restrictions on who they could resell to, I mean, it has to meet the criteria for the zoning, but there's not a requirement of who, or yeah, it's all controlled by the zoning.
Only use they could put there, but not on who they could sell it to.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, if you had two compatible things side, non-compatible things side by side, would that cost too much?
And if it's a use by right and industrial, there wouldn't be a ton we could do about that, but if it was a use by special exception, they would have to come before you all, and you can make whatever decision you want.
Okay.
Well, so, I understand your question, what you said about, there was some question about the term subdivision.
Yes.
As written here, I can understand why, I mean, it's just subdivision, I mean, it the rest are like types of businesses, and this is a, like a thing or a process, is there a way to clarify that more in language?
Not, even everything else we have, when we say that you're allowed to split the lots if...
It is consistent, it is consistent, okay, okay, well then, yeah, if it's consistent.
And so, it does, it just says subdivisions, um, the residential subdivisions would either say minor in nature subdivisions, so that's what we would think is residential.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
This is the verb subdivision, not the noun.
Yeah, it, it's just, since the rest are kinda nouns, it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can see that.
Sorry, there was some video, someone trying to get in?
You, you're talking about allowing them to subdivide their property, but, but still, the zoning, the current zoning is gonna determine whether it's gonna be commercial or residential property. You're just allowing them to split, that's all you're doing, right?
That's exactly right.
Yes.
So, I don't, I mean, can you not already split? Commercial property?
Can't.
Well, who determines the original size?
Whenever it's rezoned and platted, there is a minimum lot size for business and industrial right now.
Okay.
So whoever creates, for example, the industrial park, would have to meet those standards.
Okay.
But right now, if it says you have to have an acre lot, an acre could be large for some industrial uses, you could maybe get two lots out of it, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, okay.
And this helps us subdivide the...
Right, right now, right now, you're, with what you buy is what you, you're stuck with it more or less.
Exactly.
The whole development.
Doesn't make sense, 'cause businesses are...
Gotta be acres.
They don't need acreage.
In the industrial park?
Well, I mean, in the the piece, for whoever's buying it to subdivide it, it's gotta be at least three acres before he can subdivide it. So, if it was a, is I reading that right, if it's a two-acre lot in it, in it...
No, it has to be three acres in order to be an industrial site. So if you're thinking, somebody's gonna make a new industrial park, it would have to be at least three acres.
Okay.
But then I believe the minimum lot size is one acre.
Hmm.
So right now, if somebody just bought a three-acre piece of industrial lands, they would have a three-acre piece of industrial land, and that is it.
Right.
If we allowed this, they could have three, one-acre lots.
Okay. Which allows for growth and development and small business. Small business cost savings.
Wait, uh, okay, so I see the minimum of three, I, I'm not, where's the part that then says want subdivided a minimum of one?
It's in a different place?
It, no, it should, it should be on there, it should be in the, um, that's in B2. It should be in the dimension, so see, say for into the area, so for M2, it's five acres to create a zone, and then one acre lots within the district.
Okay.
Right now, unless it was, when they made it, it was plotted that way, they would be stuck with whatever they initially did.
All right, well, I'm wondering, just thinking aloud, why do we have a minimum size of industrial, because it's, shouldn't they only need what they need, it's, it's not like, why, why would we stop industrial growth in the industrial area? I get the houses, we don't want houses on top of houses on top of houses. And people indeed would put four houses on an acre, I, I know they would, that'd be abuse. But why would you stop? You know, if you want four coffee shops side by side, why would we wanna limit small business to having have to buy enough land for four, to put one on, what are they gonna do with the rest of the land anyway? I don't see how that promotes growth at all. Should we be looking, should we be looking into eliminating that altogether?
Or, and actually, if you can eliminate it, you can reduce it. Um, we will, next month, have another text amendment coming up that just came up last week, that deals with the density for industrial, 'cause currently the front setback is 100 feet, and that's a huge setback in
Right.
an industrial zone.
Yeah.
So, I guess
More wasted land.
If y'all wish, we can tack another text amendment on there as well, and have that discussion.
You just have to have another public hearing, 'cause it wasn't advertised.
Right, right.
Right, exactly, it would go to February, and yes, it wouldn't be part of today.
If we want commercial growth, we can continue to inhibit it with rules that are suppressing growth.
Well, and I like, I definitely like the idea of not taking up additional land, like, I mean, like you said, the concentrated, you use the land the most so that you don't go into other residential or agricultural land.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll, you'll tee that up something for us in the future to discuss, so, uh, any other comments from either board or committee about the change to allow subdivision of these properties, in, in these zones, sorry, in these zones? All right, we'll open, we'll open for public comment again then. I'm going to assume, but please confirm you've not received any calls or emails regarding this, all right? And we do not have anyone joining on WebEx, we'll pause for just a moment then. All right, with no one joining for public comment, we'll close the public comment period, uh, for this item as well. And I believe that concludes the agenda for the joint meeting.
For the board, yep.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn the joint session?
So move it, Mr. Turner.
All those in favor of adjourn? All right. Those both seem signed. All right, the joint session is concluded, and we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Moyer.
Hi. The final commission, uh, actually docket. And a quorum, welcome here. Need to do something in minutes. We're meeting on November 23rd. We're gonna be meeting on November 23rd, nobody needs to be... With your pleasure, all in the minutes, those three possible meetings.
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion made in the second.
Second.
Motion made in second. All favor of the motion, make a noise, say an aye.
Uh, uh.
Same sign, motion carries. All minutes are approved. Did you catch that, Holly?
Yes, got it.
Moving on to organizational meeting, we need to elect chairman, vice chairman, uh, any, commission, subcommittees, and I don't think there's been any change in the bylaws, but I know we have approval.
Yeah, I did send the bylaws to the county attorney, um, just to do the legal review, that hadn't been done in like a few years. He hasn't gotten them back to me yet, but if there are any changes, whenever I get them back from him, I'll bring them to whatever meeting.
I guess I'll turn it over to you, Holly.
Yes. All right. So, I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman of the Planning Commission.
I nominate Larkin Moyer.
Mr. Moyer has been nominated and seconded, are there any other nominations?
The moving nominations be closed.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we'll now take a vote. To elect Larkin Moyer as chairman of the Planning Commission.
Uh, all right.
Congratulations.
Very, very. But I appreciate it, um, I'm more of a facilitator instead of chairman, so. Anybody have any comments, one way or the other, certainly let me know. I deal with it. How we, floor be open for vice chair? If I'd like to volunteer, or?
I don't know, like Dennis Radd. I don't think I'm able to do it either.
Dennis Radd has been nominated, but has turned down. Any more nomination for vice chair?
I'd nominate Travis Bonner if he was, if he would do it.
Hmm.
Potter's been nominated, Travis, how do you feel? Are you on?
I appreciate the nomination, but I think I will forego that for now.
Okay. Any more nomination?
Roy?
Huh?
What do you think?
What I think about what?
Being nominated for vice chair.
I, I don't care, Larkin's usually pretty dependable anyway for being there. But I don't care.
I nominate Roy Easter.
Roy Easter, the nominee, there's a second, third. Motion made in second, any more nomination for vice chair? We hear a motion for Roy Easter be vice chair as acclamation? By acclamation? Motion is made, second?
Second.
Made in second. I don't think you have to have a vote on it, made in second. So Roy, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate your influence in me. Just don't miss any meetings, Larkin.
Huh?
Just don't miss any meetings.
I try not. I try not. Subcommittees.
If there's not a list in there, I do have a list of the subcommittees, if anybody needs to know what they're on, or wants to get rid of a committee, do y'all want me to go through this?
I think just send it out.
Just send it out.
Take care of that next, next moment, if I can change.
The only one I think that's really
Whit Moyer. I wanna look, see if it's others he might want.
Okay.
Or swap.
Looking at, looking at the ones that they've got me on, I'm okay with those.
Okay, great.
Did you want more?
No, I'm, I'm good with what you've got.
Don't, don't deprive me, don't deprive me. And then, after the lawyer, look at the bylaw, and bring them back up. I think that's all in our organization.
Do y'all want to, um, in the bylaws, do y'all want to keep the meetings at 7:30? Is that time still work for everyone?
Uh, with me.
Okay. Good, okay. All righty.
And I guess it'd be the fourth Monday, I guess it's the bylaws.
Yep, and I looked through those listed dates, there shouldn't be, there aren't any issues with holidays or anything, so, fourth Monday should work all year.
Okay. All right, now the new business, we have the two ordinance, ordinance amendments to consider. First one was, I've got the, uh, hospital slaughterhouse, special exemption permit under Article 4A5 agricultural district and Article 7 RP5 rural preservation district. Any comments or questions on them, or motion, one way or the other?
I make a motion to approve it.
Roy's made a motion to approve it, pass it on to the Board Supervisors, it's our second.
Second.
Made in second, any more discussion? Hear no discussion, all in favor of the motion, make it, no one by saying aye, and that's to pass it on to the Board Supervisors for their approval. I assume all, that's it. Motion carries, any against?
Did Juan vote, he's got a little yellow symbol there.
I think that means his, um, connection is not great.
Coming in, got a number of where we are in the county.
I'm fixing to get it.
I know.
It's fixing to have it, it's gonna have it real good. Probably for free, too.
Moving to the second amendment, it's allowed subdivisions as a byright use in D1 and shopping center district and industrial district. M1 industrial district, how do you feel on that amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, we table this one.
Table it.
Table it, just because there was some question about the acreage and and the size, I'm for it, but I just think, when we do it, we ought to do it all at one time, instead of thinking about it here, and then next month, we, we revisit, but I think we ought to just visit it at one time, and get all the wording straight that we need.
You wanna make a motion to table it until?
I make a motion, we table it until we get the other information about the lot size, and the questions we had during the joint hearing, yes, I make a motion, we table it for 30 days, till next month.
Motion's been made to table, it's our second.
I'll second it.
Made in second, all in favor of the motion to table it for at least 30 days, make a noise, say an aye. All opposed, the same sign? Motion carries to table it till next month, or next meeting, it's come first.
Holly, you did get the question. Go ahead, Roy.
I do have a question. Do you, do you think we should distinguish between, if we're gonna use the language subdivision, between commercial and, and residential, there's be some language inter-saying it, so people don't get confused, that I can take some commercial property and cut a residential lot off the side of it, or something?
Right, we can maybe put something in parentheses, say subdivision, just to keep it consistent with the rest of the ordinance, but then maybe put something in parentheses next to it, saying this is to mean just the cutting of lots, or something along that nature.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it probably needs a little bit of clarity, so people don't get confused about what they can do with the property.
Thanks.
I, I agree with that, it covers that.
Any other comments that we may wanna ask about that, or put before Holly to work on? I, I still say, probably gonna be something that, if you divide it, and whatever thing or society are somewhat compatible, I don't know how you do that, 'cause that would put too many restrictions.
I mean, the underlying zoning would probably take care of it, it just, if they wanted to cut a residential lot off commercial property, they would have to come back for rezoning.
Yeah. Okay.
David, I think you got cut off, what were you saying? You said Holly did you?
The notes that we talked about during the public hearing, uh, the questions we had about the lot size, and that, you got those, so we can get those questions, I just, I just think it's better when we clean it up, and then we carry it through one time.
So this is y'all's, y'all's decision. Do you want to bring it back as a text amendment next month to address those things, or do you wanna just bring it back as a discussion? On, you can vote on the M2 subdivision, or the M1 subdivision, but as far as the lot size changes, would you like to just discuss that, or put that on the agenda? Pull out as a text amendment, public hearing?
No, if you put that on, already you have to have a non-public hearing.
Correct, correct.
Ooh, I'd have to have one anyway.
We're gonna have to have a public hearing anyways next month, for the other text amendment, um, about the M2 setbacks. So we're already gonna be having one. Um, but that's up to y'all.
I, I'd put it all together, I mean,
Okay.
have a public hearing for, for it together.
Okay.
And you might check what the lawyer received for a few of these questions, you may have worked with other areas, other counties, discuss the same thing.
Yeah.
But some, some of those setbacks were, were required to provide screening and stuff on like major highways and roads and things like that, but if, if it's an internal street, like inside the industrial park, I don't see whether setbacks are necessary. But if it's somewhere on the side of 360, or 153, or something like that, yes, it probably does need to be back for the screening, but to, to kinda dress it up a little bit.
And many places make that specific distinction, it's 25 feet for all roads, except for at 360, 153, in which case it's 100. So we can specifically pull that out, if that's what you wanna do, I think that's a good idea.
Maybe we ought to word it.
Okay.
Screening is also useful for noise.
Yeah, it's something, but you don't wanna back in that driveway right into highway either, I mean.
Right.
Pull it out. Any more comments or things that we need Holly to look into?
Is there anybody interested, like right now, subdividing into us?
Mm-hmm, us.
The county.
Okay, no business. We're not, we're not, we're not holding anybody back by pushing this down, okay.
Um.
Well, maybe, um.
Yes, uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah, I don't know how my, I don't know how my question is saying, but.
Would any changes affect the person of my interest?
Yes, they would be allowed to do what they're requesting to do. At this point, it's kind of in a standstill.
So if they're ordered to subdivide?
Mm-hmm.
And by the, then it's now.
It would affect them favorably. Favorably.
They would be able to subdivide.
This change would affect them favorably.
Oh, okay, okay. The table and motion carry. Now, if he wants to pull it off the table, but, I mean, with thirty days, well, it'd really be sixty days because it's only all, so it's March before he able to do anything.
I, I'd just like to send something that the wording's not right.
Yeah.
Well, the wording wouldn't change. We couldn't do them all under one. They would have to be separate things for the purpose of, okay, say you all agreed with subdividing and the setbacks, but didn't agree with reducing the lot size. So they would all have to be separate things. I can bring them all at once, but they would each be listed separately.
In other words, I guess this one would just say that you could subdivide it.
Correct.
And then the one you bring with how you would subdivide it, or the specifics as to how.
And like Roy said, this wouldn't have any bearing on, we could put the word subdivision, but it wouldn't change the public hearing that we've had to add an additional note, clear, just for clarity, saying this does not mean you can put a residential or any other type of use in there. But it's totally up to y'all.
Any comment from the people at home? Whit, Roy, Travis, you have any comments or thoughts on that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think that probably the business and, and the commercial type zoning, uh, there's, there's other issues with it too. I think the whole, those zoning should be looked at seriously by maybe the committee or somebody, but, but that's not something that's gonna happen in the next thirty or sixty days.
But this, this guy that wants to do something is gonna happen. What would happen? He's waiting for an answer. He's got clients that are wanting, wanting some of his lots.
Yeah, I, I don't want to penalize anybody that's trying to, you know, subdivide to get a, get a business going now. Um, you know, I agree that we need to rework, I would like to have everything in order and have the right wording. But I certainly don't want to penalize somebody that's looking at trying to get some more businesses going.
We couldn't have them beaten for February, just that issue or?
We, we can, um, and I, I think what the suggestion was is tabling it until the February meeting at least, but.
That pushes it into March.
Yes, they can't do anything until we've allowed them to do this.
He wants to break ground in March.
Why is it delayed until March?
Because the board would have to make the final vote on it. So after it goes here, it has to go to supervisors to make the final decision.
Gotcha.
Has the motion been tabled?
It can be untabled.
It can be untabled, but it has to be untabled from the person of maine, I know.
That's right.
I mean, I could untable it if there's an agreement.
There's nothing wrong with doing it and then cleaning it up later. If you're doing it knowingly.
You could pass a motion with the understanding that the, uh, matter, uh, I'm thinking of the word. Matter of detail, um, on approval in the next meeting.
I can amend that.
That's one way, or you could, I mean, you gotta pull a table, you gotta pull a table off the table.
You can recall your motion.
That's the only way you can get that out. You can't amend a table motion.
And changing the wording is not something that would have to come back here or do a public hearing or anything. So we could go ahead and go for it and then put it in there. I can add the additional information with parentheses or an asterisk or something. And then show you all in February what has been put in. If that doesn't seem to capture what you all have in your head, then we can make those changes as long as the intent is still the same, the wording we can play with.
Let me recall it. And we, we go ahead forward with it, with it, expecting the details next month.
I would catch it.
I'm gonna recall my motion.
Okay.
Table it and go ahead, I'll make a motion to approval, to send it to the supervisor with the details and cleaning the wording up. So we can keep this gentleman on track.
You heard, the motion, table motion's been withdrawn, the motion made. The vote on amendment as we received it with, uh, clarification on the next meeting. As to more details as to size and whatever, uh, Holly, answer the questions on. Everybody understand the new motion? I need a second on it, but does everybody understand the motion or wants that motion amended differently?
Understood.
I'll second it.
All right, motion's second. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion?
I think Whit had a question.
Whit, you have a question?
Yeah, so I, I was just gonna say, so at this point, if he, you know, he divides it and he does break ground, he's gonna have to abide by all the setbacks and he's gonna have to keep the one acre minimum.
Yes.
That's the only, I mean, that's what it has to go for right now until we get this amended at the next meeting or whatever. But it makes trying to say it correct.
Exactly. This specific scenario is gonna allow me to be able to sign the subdivision plat to create the lots. That is all we decided tonight. Any additional changes? I could not sign off on a site plan with lesser setbacks or anything until we made those changes. So right now, if he were to submit a site plan, it would have to go by what we currently have in the ordinance. So this is only giving me permission to sign the subdivision plat.
That's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. So, yeah, I'm good.
Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, make a noise saying aye. Hearing none, the motion's carried, handed to the board supervisors for their approval or disapproval.
In all, in all fairness, Holly, God, let whoever you're working with on this deal, let them know that there's probably gonna be some changes coming down. We don't blindside them as they get into this project.
Yeah, they've made up, maybe a little less restrictive than what's on the books now, or setbacks.
Sounds like it.
Yes. Yeah, we will definitely have that conversation.
Okay.
Anything else? I don't, or have any comments, um? Anything else any member have, like to bring forward?
Nope.
All right, annual report. You saw the, probably any packet was the annual report from last year. Meetings are canceled or setback because of our.
Yeah, I think there are only about three, five meetings last year.
And the other thing I will say on February the eighth, CIP committee will meet. Uh.
We'll meet here.
Met with the board supervisors a week ago, week, ten days ago. And we got a little more explanation as to how we are supposed to approach the East Department coming into us. A little different than before. So we'll keep you updated on that next month. Could have something to vote on next month, pass to the board. For them to work as a working document on their budget.
Yeah, submissions for that are due on Friday. We haven't received a single one yet, but could be short CIP committee meeting. But we'll see what we get in.
You haven't received a single what?
Um, request yet.
Really?
Getting a little tight.
Getting a little tight, yeah.
And what is done next year?
Apparently.
Uh, maybe you ought to send them an email, the deadline is, if they want anything.
I've had some questions, so I, I think we might get a couple in, but.
Okay. You wanna have anything else?
I have one last.
Go ahead.
Thing for y'all. Um, so a lot of localities, most of it say, for each project, staff provides a recommendation based on the ordinance plan, not by personal opinion. That has have been done in the past, but gauging y'all's interest in doing that going forward. You don't have to vote based on it, but it would be just a staff recommendation of either approval or denial based on the facts of the project and the subdivision zoning and cop plan. So that is up to y'all, whether you want me to start putting that at the end of the summary report, or if you would rather continue as you are. That is up to y'all.
Anyone have any comments or against what Holly's recommend? Oh, does comments brought up in public or comments that you?
I, um, we've had some residents, I guess is the best way to say it, just, and developers ask what staff's position is because they're used to staff giving a formal recommendation. Um, that's general practice, is staff provides formal recommendation, but it's not required. So if it's not something y'all want me to do, I do not have to do it.
Would you feel comfortable up there?
Oh, I feel fine. It's not based on my opinion. It's just what I've gathered. It's, I mean, no, I feel fine doing it. It's whatever y'all would prefer.
Anyone have a recommendation? You wanna try it one time, see how it comes, or hands out?
Okay, we'll give it a go in February, see how you feel.
See how I feel.
Okay.
Anything else? You have anything else, Holly?
That's all.
So we should have a meeting in February, certainly practice, may have others.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I hear nothing else. Thank you, everybody for going up, speaking up. And, uh, thank you for voting for this, and I'll try to do my best. Meeting adjourned.
So you'll have to retire, you'll have to retire some comments.
Bye, y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.